I will be your moderator for today's session. I'm joined by Paula Jones and Gabe Lopes, who are running for school committee. I'm also joined by Dustin Luca, who is from the Salem News. He has comprised and will be asking the questions of the candidates. The format for today's forum is that each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement, and then they will have 90 seconds to answer each question. And then they will have two minutes at the close of today's session for a concluding remark. We flipped a coin before we started the show today, and Gabe will be doing his introduction first. So with that, go right ahead, Gabe.
Hey, good evening, everyone. And first, I want to thank DCAT and Salem News for organizing this forum. My name is Gabe Lopes. I'm the lucky husband of an amazing wife and father of two very fun and silly children who are also in attendance in the Danvers school system. Actually, my seven-year-old is in second grade, and my son will be entering next year. I have a communication degree from Emerson College, and I got my master's in business administration from Northeastern University with a focus on global studies and leadership. I have over 20 years of success working in the global corporate space. I'm currently the director of sales at S and P Global, where my team does forecasting and analysis for political risk, violence, and economics. I'm recognized globally as a positive influencer, a collaborator, and a leader. I'm a problem solver, and I'm regularly pulled in to help with customers, colleagues, and the executive leadership team when making critical decisions. My family and I stumbled on Danvers almost eight years ago, and we immediately felt welcome here. Following a string of concerning incidents in the schools and community, I decided to get directly involved. It's time for our community to move forward and focus on amplifying all of the best that Danvers schools have to offer as we work to address the challenges in a collaborative and systematic way. I will bring focus and a positive attitude to my role on the school committee. My ability to build consensus, navigate obstacles, and achieve winning achieve winning results will allow me to help move the district forward by having a positive impact on our school committee, schools, and community. So as a member of your school committee, I will focus on ensuring our reading curriculum and instructional strategies are based on evidence-based research. I'll support a strong special education program for our most vulnerable learners, verify that the curriculum addresses the demands of the 21st century global society, and in create an inclusive learning community where all feel safe and welcome. And thank you again for your time.
Very good. Thank you, Gabe. And Paula, your introduction, please.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening, and thank you for putting this together. My name is Paula Jones, and I firmly believe that Danvers has some of the best teachers, but their teaching in a school system that has lacked strong leadership, support, and adequate training. They are feeling pressure right now that I know well, bringing 20 years of experience to the table as a classroom teacher, an instructional coach, and an administrator gives me the knowledge to back recommendations I will make to our district administration to bring us from ranking 114th in the state to one of the best districts in the Commonwealth. I will make recommendations to the administration to identify best practices from teachers across the district to ensure our children are challenged and we strive for excellence. I will advocate for addressing the learning loss that occurred in getting back to basic academics focusing on core subjects while maintaining the much-needed and appreciated special subjects like art, music, physical education, and library. Between being remote for the spring of 2020 and then remote and or hybrid for the majority of the 2020-2021 school year, the learning loss was substantial, and we now need to think creatively about how we can continue to address it. Some thoughts I have are ensuring the best practices going on in every classroom every day. There is fidelity to curriculum, and coaching is available for any teacher who needs support. We need more support for our teachers to help with addressing the mental health issues from the pandemic that some of our students continue to struggle with. We need to ensure that all students feel supported and safe at school. Every student should feel comfortable talking to an adult about what is going on at school, whether it is bullying or another issue. Every student should have one trusted adult at school. I ask you to ask your own children who theirs is, and I guarantee you, some of you will be surprised by their answer. I will advocate for a buddy system in every school, linking the oldest and youngest together to build friendships and compassionate relationships, and to prevent bullying from day one. We owe it to our students to have safe and respectful learning environments. We need stronger policies to address the issues, and we need to follow those policies. I will always advocate for our children first, and every decision I make will be a student-centered one.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. I appreciate that. I should have mentioned this at the opening of our broadcast today. We are doing this via Zoom because our audio mixer in the studio went down at 5:30 today. Kind of fried itself. So DCAT has scrambled and put us all on laptops, and so we're doing this via Zoom. So just wanted to explain why you're seeing us in all little squares. Okay, Dustin, over to you. And first question, please, and this will go to Paula.
Thank you very much, everybody, for joining us today. Obviously, there's a lot going on in education right now, and how we educate children has even shifted dramatically during the pandemic, moving away from a traditional school day in a 21st century classroom to fully embracing remote learning and online technology for all ages. It's so big, even snow days might actually be in jeopardy going forward. How should the school committee address some of these new issues and policies as the pandemic ends and as education continues into the future?
Thank you. So I do agree that a lot has changed, right? Many people are working from home still, and they haven't gone back into the office. And I do think that we need to, again, address that learning loss. I think that I'm a snow day person, right? I think a snow day could be a snow day. I think that kids need to go outside and play. I think that they need to be kids and have those things now. If we got into a situation where maybe there were more than the five allotted, I may think about advocating for something built in that way. But I do believe that children receive the best education when they're in front of their teacher, when they're in school, when they're in a seat, when they're in their routines, when they know the expectations that are upon them. They know the routines of school. They need to be face-to-face in the classroom, in school, as much as possible. And when we have the occasional snow day, which as we know in New England, it can happen in April, then they need to have a snow day, right? They need just as much fun to refuel, get outside, get fresh air, play in the snow, you know, read a book inside, have a cup of hot cocoa. But when they can be in school, they need to be in school in front of the trained professionals that we trust with our children's education every day.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. And Gabe, same question.
Hey, thanks for the question. I think more than anything else, the pandemic is pretty much raining. We're in an environment where we have to learn to live with COVID or any form of it that exists today. There's now plenty of home testing. There are masks available to anyone who wants it. I think teachers, parents, and the students have all adjusted in a way of understanding what the impacts are of potentially getting COVID and how to deal with it. So the bottom line for me is that the kids and the teachers need to be in the schools. I think we're past work-from-home environments. I pray that we will never go back to that again. But most importantly, the kids have to be back in schools. And from a corporate America perspective, we're also working on getting our employees back into the offices. We always want to emphasize flexibility in regards from a professional workforce. But when it comes to education, especially our young learners, and having the ability to, you know, look their teachers in the eye, you know, play with their colleagues, build that social emotional awareness, and, you know, and build relationships within the schools, they have to be in the classrooms. I don't see us at any point in the near term going back to remote learning. I hope we don't. If we do, I hope we're better prepared, and we've learned from the experience that many of the parents went through here in Danvers. But bottom line, the last resort is to pull our kids out of the school. Last resort is to mandate masks back on them. But let's go back to normal. It's the new normal now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Gabe. Okay, Dustin, your next question, and this is addressed to Gabe first.
So there are many pressing issues in the schools on the horizon, some examples of national discussions hitting locally, while others are local issues driving conversations in meeting rooms. We're going to start with one of the elephants in the room, the recent revelations of racist and homophobic hazing centering the high school's hockey team. How has this impacted your decision to run for office, and how will your membership respond to these incidents if you're elected?
Can you repeat that last part of the question? How will my what?
Sure. How has this impacted your decision to run for office, and how will your membership respond to these incidents if you're elected?
Yeah, thank you for the question. More than anything else, for me personally, that is the singular reason that I got involved in my campaign for school committee. As many of many folks now know, I was one to speak up immediately when I attended the school committee meeting to discuss these issues. And I was incredibly disappointed by what I was hearing. I was incredibly disappointed by, you know, the lack of information that was available to the parents, to the students. I was very disappointed in the lack of transparency and honesty. No one raised their hand and said, "We messed up. We're sorry. We can do better." So that's why I wanted to insert myself into this. And with that, we're now two years past these incidents. Many of those involved have moved on. They've either graduated. Others were just freshmen and barely knew what was going on. It's so important to move past this right now. Our children have lost a few years, especially at the high school level. They've lost a lot of the social experiences that you only get once within high school. I want to eliminate the elephant in the room of what has happened in the past from the racial, you know, incidents that have happened or the discriminatory practices that have happened. I have confidence in our leaders that they've learned from this experience, and that I don't ever see it happening again. But as a member of the school committee, it's something that I will closely keep an eye on, but I'm not going to hold, you know, I'm not going to hold this over their heads. We need to move on.
Good. Thank you, Gabe. Paula, same question for you.
Yeah, so it did impact my decision to run. There were several things that did, but that definitely certainly is a big one. I do think that we need to be completely honest and transparent with parents, with the community, with staff. I know many people at the elementary level had no idea what was going on until it came out. And so that is not okay. I think that this is our chance with a change in leadership and superintendency to bring in somebody with the quality of transparency and honesty, somebody who's going to watch and listen to the community in the school district needs. I think that this is a very unique opportunity to whomever gets this seat on the school committee to influence that decision. I think that as a school committee, we would need to work collaboratively together to ensure that we are giving as much information while protecting privacy as necessary to people and to be able to get those answers. There's nothing more frustrating, and I saw it on Gabe's face when he presented and spoke at the school committee that night, than asking questions and no one being able to answer those questions. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the superintendent is who has those answers for us and owes that to us as a committee, as a community. And again, I would agree that these incidences happened two years ago. We need to be better. We need to move forward. We need to keep educating our students. It starts at home. And we need to keep, you know, being open and transparent and as honest as possible.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Okay, Dustin, your next question, and this is for Paula to answer first.
So across the country, national issues like flag policies and rules governing where and when masks are worn and things like that have transformed school committee meetings. Just a couple of towns over in Hamilton and Wyndham, the recent school committee race saw what many candidates described as national debates interfering with local politics, while others view these discussions as vital to protect children and families. Danvers has certainly had its own fair share of back and forth on masks as well. Where do you sit on the importance of masks and flag discussions in front of the school committee?
Thank you. So I am a firm believer in family choice from here on out and have been for probably the last three to four months. I think that if you have a comfort level and you are okay without a mask, and that is a family decision, then please do so. I also believe that if you are a family who feels that you need to wear a mask for whatever your personal family reasons are, please do so. I think we need to teach acceptance, and I think that we need to be accepting of whatever everybody's decision is. If it comes down to the school board level, to the school committee level, and we get to vote on whether or not to mask our children, I will always vote no. It doesn't always come down to that level, though. People need to understand that there are sometimes state mandates that we can't get around. And sometimes there are DESI guidelines, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that we can vote for and do our own recommendations. But my recommendation would always be to not put our kids back in masks, you know, not mandate that we put them back in masks, and not mandate that we know their vaccination status. I believe that is family choice. And I think that we all have to make the decision that's best for our families and our children, and we need to be accepting of those decisions, whether somebody decides to or not. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Gabe, your response, please.
Absolutely. And I've said it multiple times, even on a video on my website. We're done with masks, but if anyone wants to wear them, go right ahead. You know, again, we are at the liberty of any state mandates that come down, so we really can't control that. In regards to the national headlines and politics, I see that all as noise. I'm running for school committee as a Danvers resident, as a Danvers parent, as a Danvers neighbor. So there is no Democratic or Republican or independent in this race. It's about, you know, how much do we care about our kids? How much do we care about our schools? How much are we going to support our teachers? And again, I'll just reinforce that everyone has access to masks that are incredibly effective. If you want to wear them, please do. No one's going to judge you on it. I just came back from vacation, and my family was probably one of 90% of the folks who still wear their masks on an airplane despite the mandate. It's just something that we were comfortable with, and we did it. Outside of that, we never wore masks again. And I think everyone is recognizing that as another new normal in our environment. So again, when it comes to national things, I really tried not to listen to the noise at all. It's really about, you know, how are we going to help our kids recover from the time lost in school and what we can do as a community to support our teachers and the students?
Good. Thank you, Gabe.
Yeah, sure.
Great. Okay, Dustin, your next question, and this Gabe will answer first.
So in many places where these national discussions have taken over, many have argued that they're distractions from the real issues. And this is kind of something that Gabe, you were just kind of talking a little bit about. You know, there are real issues in education. So the remaining questions from here on out, we've got to focus on these issues. To begin, you are holding the report card for Danvers Public Schools. On a scale of A to F, what letter grade do you assign to the school system and why?
Wow, great question. Very provocative. I think I'll have to give it a B, only because when I see the engagement that I am personally receiving and comments from people in the community, at least at the elementary school level, parents overall seem to be pretty happy with the level of education, with the engagement of the teachers, with the engagement of, you know, the reading specialists or paraprofessionals. I hear a lot of positive things. I know that there are some issues in the middle school, some of that due to, you know, middle school is probably the toughest part of my personal education, so I can really relate. I have friends who are also in the education space, and middle school is very difficult. There've been some headlines in the press, but I do know that that's a challenging space. So, you know, they'll get the average grade. I think the high school is, has gotten a bad rap because of all of the negative press that has happened. It's really overwhelmed all of the good things or overran all of the good that they're doing and continue to do today. You know, with the, you know, with the, you know, one of the best deck of teams in the state, all of the AP programs that they have, the internship opportunities, the early college programs that they have going on. But I think I'd have to give the town of Danvers a solid B, because I think there's a lot of good happening that no one wants to acknowledge. And we really have to change the mindset around that and really start to support and speak proudly about our school system. And we're past the last two dark years.
And all right.
Change the story.
Thank you, Gabe. Appreciate that. Okay, Paula, same question.
Great, thank you. So I'd have to give us a B minus. I think that we have many, as Gabe said, opportunities where there's so much positive going on. But I do also think we need to continue to look inward in what we can do to strengthen what we have. We have many phenomenal programs. I think at the elementary level, we need to shift over to science of reading. I know they've dabbled in it a little bit. The researcher's name is Hagerty, and they're going to a science-based reading program and how the brain learns how to read. We've done that in my current district as well, and we've seen great success with it. So I think we need to continue to do things like that and bring things forward. I think that we need to continue to provide supports for our teachers in professional development for our teachers around things such as the science of reading, around how to deal with the added behaviors that we've seen, maybe post-COVID and some of the behaviors we had even pre-COVID. I think that we need to continue to support all of our learners in all of their capacities. And I also think that we just need to continue to leverage our opportunities, keep talking. As an educator myself, I look forward to hopefully being a part of bringing that grade up and seeing more positives. And I think that I will continue to tout the positives with a fourth grader at the elementary level. And my daughter's now in sixth grade. I couldn't agree more with Gabe that middle school is not the easiest place to navigate as a student and as a parent. I've talked to the administration at the high school. I've talked to the administration at the middle school. I've talked to my own kids' principal. And I think that, you know, we have lots of great things going on, and we just need to continue to get better.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate that. Okay, Dustin, your next question, please, and this is addressed to Paula first.
Absolutely. Lisa Dana has announced her plans to retire and during 32 years with the district and 18 as a superintendent. What qualities does Danvers need to prioritize in its next school district leader?
That's a great question. Thank you. It's something I've been doing a lot of thinking about, because whomever wins this seat will have a unique opportunity to be a part of that process. So that, to me, having worked for three different superintendents in three different districts, two in Massachusetts and, well, three in Massachusetts and one in New Hampshire, I feel like I bring a unique perspective to the table. So here's what I am hoping that we will look for in a new superintendent. I think we need to look for somebody, like I already said, who will watch and listen to the community and the school district needs. Get out there, talk to people, not have their own agenda. I think we need to definitely have someone who puts the interests of students first. We have to make student-centered decisions every day, day in and day out. We cannot make adult-centered decisions. We need somebody who is transparent. Going back to everything we've already talked about, transparency is going to be key. Somebody who's going to continue to evolve the vision of the Danvers Public Schools and make sure that they create their version of that vision and execute that with fidelity. And you get buy-in, you get teacher buy-in, and, you know, we can go great places. And lastly, the person has got to be a great communicator. Communication has got to be a strong skill of theirs. They need to be able to articulate and answer questions and talk to the community and really be passionate about education.
Good. Thank you, Paula. Gabe?
Hey, great, great question. And as someone who's personally hired over 100 professionals during my time, and I actually report to a vice president that I hired almost 20 years ago now, which is a small world, I really look forward to doing the evaluation for the next superintendent. And there are some very specific things that I know I'm going to be looking for, and I think will be a valuable asset to the community. I'm looking for leadership. I'm looking for someone with vision, a strategic thinker, and someone who can build positive relationships. This person has to be someone who communicates openly and effectively with all stakeholder groups in the community that wants a robust curriculum, wants to ensure all students and staff feel safe, takes accountability seriously. They're transparent, and they're not afraid of tough conversations. So in agreement with Paula, communications is one of the most critical components of this role. So a strong communicator that's open and transparent will be critical in ensuring that any initiatives succeed and help to move the district forward. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Okay, Dustin, next question, please, and this will go to Gabe first.
Perhaps the largest issue in education right now is the learning loss caused by COVID-19 pandemic, which Paula, you had been speaking about a little bit earlier. How will Le York to best improve a child's chances in the classroom as we enter a third year of the pandemic with infection rates once again starting to climb?
Oh, I have to disagree. I don't think infection rates are starting to climb, but I'll answer the question anyway. The loss of learning has been pretty significant, and my family and I have been impacted by this directly. I mean, I had long conversations with curriculum directors, specifically here in Danvers. And for me personally, and among a lot of families, when it comes to reading, I've noticed and I've been told that the biggest loss in reading has been from K through first grade. From kindergarten to first grade, those readers, when they're learning, there's almost no differentiation between them. As you start to hit second grade, that's where, you know, things start to diverge. And that's where you start to identify students that are kind of behind. My daughter actually landed in that sweet spot where COVID impacted her learning in K2, just as she was starting to learn how to read, and she wasn't back in a classroom until second grade. So I'm very encouraged by the conversations and knowing that, as Paula mentioned earlier, moving to the science of reading, emphasizing phonics, emphasizing, you know, my daughter's on a 504 and having the additional help within the classrooms that the special education, the director of special education is bringing in a new support staff for each grade level in the elementary school. I think it's going to be critical to helping our students catch up. So just not at the elementary level, but middle school and high school. We just have to do a lot of catch-up and ran out of time. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Gabe. Appreciate that. And I appreciate you watching the clock, too. I always hate to cut people off. Okay, Paula, same question.
Yeah, so learning losses is real for kiddos. And those of us that chose to keep our kids home, maybe remote as long as possible for whatever reason, versus some kids who went back hybrid, and there definitely is a difference there. I'm fortunate that my kids were over that hump of learning, having to learn how to read, and they were at the point of reading to learn when the pandemic hit. So we're in a little bit of a different situation in my house, but definitely could see my own sixth graders' math skills lagging, you know, had to hire a tutor, which we're happy to do. But, you know, we have to continue again to look inward. I think we have to, in my current district, we use grant money to hire behavior technicians that would come in and that will work with kids, so we can get some of these behaviors under control. We need to continue to push home the social emotional learning, because we all know if a child is in school and they're not socially and emotionally ready to learn, the teachers could have planned the best lessons, and the students aren't prepared to take in that information. So we have to start to address those things first. We need a soft landing for kids, because they aren't always ready to transition to school from home. We need, a lot of kids, we're finding, just need to learn how to be in school again, right? The first six weeks of school this year looked like it took until December to establish the routines instead of till the mid-October. So I think we need to do that. I think we need to continue to hire support staff that we can train to push into classrooms to support kids. We need small group reading instruction. We have wonderful phonics programs and foundations already in place. I think we just need to continue to push that science of reading and get kids to read at home at night with their families.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Dustin, next question, starting with Paula.
Many communities have been looking at their relationship with Essex Tech in recent years, with some expanding the relationship and others looking to cap how many students they sent. What role does this institution play as an alternative to Danvers High, and where do you think this relationship needs to have?
So I had the pleasure of proactively reaching out to the superintendent and the principal of Essex Tech, and I took a tour there. I don't know, maybe two and a half or three weeks ago. I took a 90-minute tour. I talked to them. I saw their programs. I asked them if they would be willing to come to the table to collaborate with the Danvers Public Schools, and they knew I was running for school committee. I said to them, regardless, this is important to me. I feel it's important to give our students every opportunity to receive the education that they need, be it hands-on, be it traditional, be it non-college route, whatever that is. And they were very willing to come to the table and collaborate if we were willing to do so. And I do think with the change in administration at Danvers High, there's definitely some opportunity there for collaboration. I do not agree with the cap that has been proposed and I believe discussed. I'm not sure voted upon. I think that we need to instead leverage our connections that we have, and what do they offer that we could maybe then instill in our schooling as well, that may entice some children to stay, students to stay. I do think, as we already talked about, they have wonderful college prep programs. They have AP classes. They have internships. I'd like to see the internship come down to junior year at Danvers High. There are some wonderful things going on, but is there missed opportunities that we can collaborate on together to ensure that we're offering all of our students what they need to be successful in school?
Thank you, Paula. Gabe, same question.
Hey, thanks for that. As if I'm elected, my focus is going to be on improving the reputation of Danvers High School. I think there's a lot of fear and anxiety of middle schoolers going into the high school, and some of that fear and anxiety rests with the parents who also believe their kids have a better opportunity of being successful with hands-on learning. I don't agree with the cap at Essex Tech. What I will say is that I believe competition brings out the best in all of us, including institutions. I think this is a great opportunity for Danvers High School and the leadership. I spent a lot of time with Mr. Federico and discussing how can you market, better market, all of the things that you have to offer here at Danvers High School? How can we be creative about including middle schoolers in activities at the high school level? How can we circumvent the fear and anxiety of attending Danvers High School if you are on the path towards college and not a traditional vocational learner to experience some of the classes early, even before you enter the high school? What kind of welcoming environment can you create in regards to, you know, matching up with peers in the high school? Or even looking at it from a creative perspective, from athletics, you know, can we include eighth graders or seventh graders? Maybe with band? This is a great opportunity to really emphasize and reinforce all of the great qualities of the high school to give our middle schoolers a chance to experience that a little bit earlier. But it's something that we definitely have to look at, because it impacts our budget. I'll just leave it there.
All right. Thank you, Gabe. Appreciate that. Dustin, your next question, please, and it'll be addressed to Gabe first.
North Shore and Greater Essex County is loaded with options for school after school ends. You have North Shore Community College right here in Danvers and also in Lynn, which itself has a partnership with Salem State University. You've got Gordon College, Endicott, my alma mater and Havreland Lawrence with Northern Essex Community College. Some school districts have seen partnerships formed between the high schools and the colleges that they feed and others, not so much. How would you like to see these relationships grow as higher education struggles to draw students amid a challenging financial climate and growing conversations on the impact of student loan debt?
Yeah, I mean, first and foremost, I would advocate for a nationally free. College tuition program, especially community colleges. I mean, specifically community college colleges. I know that Danvers High has an existing relationship with North Shore Community College where there's, where seniors can, you know, leave during the school day and get college credits. And start to experience what life is like within a college classroom in regards to the instruction and the interaction with, you know, your college professors and the independence that comes with. You know, not having someone over your shoulder and making sure that you're doing your readings and all this other stuff. So that accountability is incredibly valuable. I would like to see that extended. I would love to see Danvers High School build a relationship with Salem State University. Why not Endicott College? Why not, you know, the plethora of colleges that are surrounding us here in the North Shore? College tuition is, is, is just out of control. It's not feasible. I mean, you think about, you know, even back to the eighties, I had family members who, you know, worked part-time and paid for school. And you know, after a few years of, of working, they were, they were cleared of debt. It's completely unsustainable to graduate from a university and be in, you know, debt of eighty, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. And double that if you're going to law school or even medical school. So I think we have to find creative ways and I hope from, speaking from a national perspective, that our administration. Can really cross the aisle and create, you know, free, you know, community colleges nationally.
Thank you, Gabe. Paula, same question.
So I do think that we have an opportunity to leverage relationships, just as I reached out to Essex Tech and took that wonderful tour and got lots of information and got to see lots of interesting things. Had the chance to talk to Mr. Federico about all the wonderful things going on at Danvers High. I think we have a unique opportunity to do the same things with some of our local community colleges. Not everybody goes a traditional four-year college route. It's just not for everybody, which is why. I think that hands-on education choices have to be championed and expanded. Just as well as non-traditional, non-four-year college routes have to be championed and expanded as well. I'm married to somebody who did not go a traditional route. He went to North Shore Community College for two years before attending WPI for four years. I myself have an undergraduate degree in business and then I went on to Salem State University for my master's degree and then eventually my certificate in educational leadership. So I think that we need to, you know, look at all of those things. I do think that expanding the internship program down to junior year and partnering with local businesses as well as colleges and universities. Would be a wonderful thing for our students. I think the sooner they can kind of get out and have that real world experience. And get that feel that they will be excited about the potential of moving into the workforce or. Moving into a two-year college or into a four-year college or into a non-traditional route, whatever that may be. We need to make sure that we're capturing as many of our students as possible and getting them excited to graduate from high school and move on to whatever their next goal is.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Okay, Dustin, your next question, please, and it'll be addressed to Paula first.
This will be the last question focusing on education issues here in Danvers. What is the district's greatest strength and how will you advance it if elected? And likewise, what is the greatest weakness and how will you address it if elected?
Oh, hands down, our district's greatest strength is our teachers and support staff. You can, I cannot say enough good things about the staff that we have that I've experienced as a parent, as a former principal. They are dedicated. They are, they want what's best for our kids. They want to see our kids advance and learn. They want to stay abreast of current trends. We have Julie Posternix, the elementary curriculum director. She's phenomenal. Mary Wormers as the K to twelve curriculum director. So we have some really good things in place and we have some really good potential. To keep moving our district forward. We have some wonderful coaches. I would love to see that expanded because I think they're an asset, having been an instructional coach myself. Getting into classrooms and being able to coach teachers on best practice and ensure best practices are happening every day and we have fidelity to curriculum. It is statistically impossible to not see our scores go up if that's happening every single day. So it's not all about the scores. It's about best practice in classrooms on a daily basis, getting back to those core subjects, giving kids what they need, social emotional learning. And, and you know, the arts and library and music and all those things that they need to succeed. Our biggest weakness is sometimes I think we have knee-jerk reactions to things. And that is not a way to have long-term sustainable change. I think that we need to think long and hard about policies and things that we instill to make sure that we get the best results for all of our students.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Gabe, your response, please.
Hey, I'll just echo the people, but for me personally, when I first came to Danvers, I believe the infrastructure is absolutely incredible. In regards to the school facilities that we have, the fields, people within the town are absolutely great. I'm incredibly impressed as a parent in regards to how engaging all the teachers have been. Believe that the leadership within this town has experienced the worst. So we do have a hardened administration that is probably going to be more prepared than any other to deal with adversity or controversy. We've really had a bad spell within the town. So it's something that I, you know, again, in regards to moving the district forward, focusing on what's positive. Being better marketers of all of the great things that we've done while we, you know, systematically work on the things that need to be improved are going to be paramount. So again, I think we have some resilient people within the town who believe in it and aren't going to give up. In regards to our weakest link, I'd say it's, you know, a longstanding attitude. I've spoken to leadership. Teachers, parents, folks who've pretty much had a, a negative attitude towards the local public school system. For whatever reason, folks who've traditionally sent their kids to private schools, who want to send their kids to Essex Tech because there's that lingering perception. Of what Danvers High School is going to be. So that's, for me, that's going to be a primary focus. I want to partner with Federico and change that.
Great. Thank you very much. And Dustin, did you say that was the end of the questions?
Nope. So I actually have three more. Okay. And I'm just looking at the time. We got about fifteen more minutes to go. So I think that this is going to work out really well. Especially because both of those answers just now, you both kind of i- in part touched on the admin, the central office. And that's the next two questions are targeting the central office. So here's your opportunity to say how you'd handle these things if you were beyond the school committee. Another ongoing issue in many districts, including here in Danvers, is a rise in anti-Semitic commentary and graffiti. Danvers has been no stranger to this and recently took the approach of no longer publicly addressing these incidents as a means to not give the perpetrators. The attention that drives their action. Do you agree with this decision as a means to deny these fires the oxygen they need to survive? Or do you think it's more important to publicly address the concerns and douse them with water as they begin to burn?
And Gabe, you'll go first.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't necessarily agree with suppressing any of this. I know there are attention seekers who will do this. I think this is an opportunity to double down on the education of the impact of what's happening. You know, coming, I'm, you know, I grew up in East Boston. I wasn't necessarily exposed to any anti-Semitism. I was exposed to a little bit of racism and bullying back in my town. So that's something that I personally was familiar with and could experience. When I first moved to Danvers and started to, you know, hear about these antisemitic type of incidents, it was very informing to me. Especially with the, the amount of Jewish friends that I have and that are very close personal friends. It was an opportunity for me to step outside of the traditional racism that I was familiar with and understanding how I was feeling. And taking those feelings and putting myself in their shoes. Anti-Semitism is horrible. It's, it's nasty. And it's something that we have to be aware of. It's something that our schools be very aggressive and forward and open about teaching. And instructing how it's, it's, it's just wrong. I mean, at, at the core of it. So long story short, it's, let's. Let's, let's shed some light on it and, and let's address it and ensure that this is part of the curriculum. This is something that is part of building an inclusive community. Let's drown out those actions with loud voices who speak openly about, you know, putting an end to this.
Great. Thank you, Gabe. Paula?
Thank you. So I don't agree in suppressing either. I do think we do have to be careful because we do have some attention seeking potentially going on. But I do have to say that, you know, I, I have taught in districts where. I've had a fairly high Jewish population. And I think that understanding is, is half the battle and being open and willing to come to the table and being willing to discuss. And you know, here's kind of where I am, where are you? And I think that, you know, hiding behind something is never going to work. And I agree with Gabe. We have to have loud voices. We have to overcome it. We have to be open and honest. We have to teach about it. A friend of mine was on the campaign to set up the Holocaust Symposium through the Lappin Foundation. The feedback has been fantastic from participants in that. And I, you know, as a principal, I do not look the other way from misdeeds. You have to try and understand them and you have to try and come to some consensus and then you have to, you know, move on and be kind and be respectful. I love the idea of bringing real people in to talk about these things. I think it's important. I think as a parent, it's important for me. I certainly. Still love to learn. I'm a lifelong learner and I think it's important for my kids to know these things. I think it's important to, you know, have open hearts as we go into these conversations and. And know that we might all not have the same point of view, but we need to be respectful of others and we need to hear them out and then we need to, you know, move on.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Gabe, I'm sorry, Dustin, your next question, please.
Yep, I have a question. You have a question?
Who had a question?
Okay, sorry. Um, so yeah, so we opened with a reference to snow days. Now we're going to talk about snow days. Were you to ask a child what the most important issue in this election is, they might talk about snow days. So for all of our non-voters under the age of eighteen, should they be included on a calendar? Or is this the time to phase them out in place of bad days and remote?
Paula, you go first.
To me, okay, thank you. Um, well, if you talk to the kids in the Jones household, they will tell you absolutely leave them in the calendar and we love our snow days. Because we get to go outside, we get to play in the snow, we get to sled, we get to have hot chocolate. Most likely we get to have mom home with us because she has a snow day too. And so for me, I, I mean, if you're, I think that we still occasionally need. A good old fashioned snow day. And that is my firm belief as a mom. I love to get outside with my kids. I love to engage with them. It's nice to snuggle up and watch movies. I do think though, as I stated before, that, you know, if we were to go over five, I do think we should have some sort of a plan in place for some sort of learning. But like I already said, the best learning happens in front of their teachers when they're in person. When they're able to see and when they are in their, you know, school mindset, we know there's no connection problems. We know they have all the materials they need right in front of them. They have the expert in front of them teaching them. And that's, that's my opinion that, you know, five snow days, it's been that way forever. And maybe I'm just a little old fashioned about that. But I do think all, sometimes we just need a good old fashioned snow day to, to hang out and play in the snow and enjoy it.
I agree with that. So, um, Gabe, same question, please.
Absolutely cannot cancel snow days. It's an institution. That would be, that would be absolutely horrible. The kids need to play. That's part of the experience. I mean, I, I equate snow days to, you know, prom or some other, you know. Normal event that we've just been experiencing for generations. Snow days also give me as a corporate employee, the ability to log off. Hey, my kids are home. I, I tend to them. So, you know, selfishly, snow days also give me the ability to spend time with my kids as well. The other thing about snow days, I don't think we appreciate is, you know, years, we almost get no snow. So the kids need to go out and play, go and enjoy it, go sledding, throw snowballs, build a snowman. So yeah, I'll cut my answer short. I agree with everything Paula said. It's. Absolutely. Keep the snow days in the calendar. The kids need to be in school to learn. If they're home, I'm fine with the parent making them read a book. After that, go out and play. Don't, don't get away.
Very good. Thank you. Dustin, your, is this your final question?
If this is the last one, this one's starting with Gabe. Danvers Public Schools has procured a magic wand with enough power to fix any issue instantly, but only one. What are you fixing and why?
This is my closing, but I'm just going to say bullying. I, I think bullying is one of the most disruptive things that we can have within the school and within a community. If the kids don't feel safe and comfortable, they're not learning. Bullying is something that doesn't have a race, gender, sexual identity. It's an economic status. It's not strength. Everyone and anyone is capable of bullying, be it in person or especially online. If I could wave a magic wand and eliminate that, so kids know every single day, despite what's going on in their world. That they won't be bullied on the way to school, on the school bus or in the classroom. I think that'll accelerate learning and I'll just, and that's my magic wand. Bullying and in all forms has, has to.
You're very good. Thank you, Gabe. Paula?
I agree with Gabe. I'm going to take a little bit different route, but I do agree. That would be a wonderful magic wand to have. I think for me, ensuring that every student came to school with what they needed socially and emotionally. Ready to learn and engage with the curriculum would be phenomenal. If they had all the self-awareness, the self-management, the social awareness, the relationship skills, the responsiveness decision-making. That they needed to come to school ready to learn because not everybody comes from, you know, a home where they've had breakfast and. You know, mom or dad or caregiver, you know, gives them a hug and a kiss and sends them off to school ready to learn and about their day. So I think for me, if they could, you know, come to school ready to learn and ready to. Be in a safe, inclusive environment where they are accepted for who they are. And the, their academic abilities and we meet them where they're at and move them forward. That would be amazing.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So now each candidate has two minutes to. Their, their final statement and because of the way we started the program, I will go first. So if we can have two minutes on the, the clock and Paula, please go right ahead.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for this opportunity. It's been wonderful. For my closing statement, I have never considered running for any sort of political office until this opportunity presented itself. And I decided to run for our students, our families and our staff of DPS. I have learned a lot about our town in this process along the way. I have met some wonderful people and made new relationships. And for that, I am grateful and thankful. It is time that we rebuild trust in our district. It is time we put our children first. It's time for parents and caregivers' voices to be respectfully heard and acknowledged. As a member of the Danvers School Committee, I will advocate for our students. I will advocate for our parents and caregivers. I will advocate for our teachers. I want safe and supportive schools for all of our students. If I can help even one student feel that way, it is a win. It takes time and not knee-jerk reactions to make a difference and I am here to stay the course. Transparency and parental involvement is going to help us make strides in our schools. The more we make informed decisions and inform our parents, we are going to be able to make long-lasting change and a better environment for all of our students. My two children attend Danvers Public Schools and we intend to keep them here. I am deeply invested here. I am not affiliated with any political party. I will independently make the decisions that are best for our students and their education. We, you and I chose Danvers deliberately and we chose Danvers Public Schools for our kids' future. I firmly believe that the quality of public, our public education can and will improve through partnerships and trust. Students first, parental involvement, transparency and trust. Elect me on May third and let's change our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula. Gabe, your closing statement, please.
And again, thank you both and Paula and everyone for your time. I'm running for school committee because I see better days ahead for our children and teachers. After all of the honest and open conversations I've had with parents, teachers, administrators, town officials and many more, I true this in my heart. My lived experience, both personally and professionally, has prepared me to support the district in a collaborative and inclusive manner. And with your support, I am ready to tackle the challenges and obstacles ahead. I've run an organized and disciplined campaign, but I hope give some insight to how I will work with existing school committee members, teachers and leadership in our town. Danvers has the infrastructure and income and economics in place to make the necessary changes we need. It's about getting focused, creating specific plans and goals and making sure that we follow through. Not all changes will happen overnight, but the most immediate thing we can do is start to change our mindset. Let's build on a foundation of transparency, trust and collaboration. Because we can all agree, we all want what's best for our children and our community. Or I end, I have to highlight one parent conversation that has stayed with me throughout this campaign. For I am, I have to highlight one parent conversation that has stayed with me throughout this campaign. A mom reached out to me to learn more about my stance, particularly on bullying, and was encouraged by my message and how I'm running my campaign. If she could have a sign on her lawn and I personally delivered it. While there, she came out to greet me and introduced me for her son. This is the man who's going to help make the school safer for kids like you. He then gave me a hug. That night, he decided to make me a sign and I have, and I'm going to keep this with me for good luck. A very simple sign, if you could see it, it says vote for me. I'll keep this forever. And if elected, will be on my desk every day as a reminder of why I want to be a part of the solution. My most important goal is to help foster a safe and inclusive learning environment for all learners and educators. When kids feel safe, they learn. I hope this forum has allowed you to get to know me better. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm Gabe Lobes, candidate for school committee and I respect the rest of your vote on Tuesday, May 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. I, I personally want to thank both Paula and Gabe for coming forward tonight to participate in this forum. These two volunteers are running for one open seat. And the winner on May 3rd will join Alice Campbell, Eric Crane, Robin Doherty and Jeffrey Kay to complete the five-person board. Both of these candidates have the Danvers children's best education at heart. So when you go to the polls, remember that. Listen to what you heard today and, and vote accordingly. Vote your conscience. I want to thank Dustin for his participation in tonight's forum. I want to thank DCAT for hosting us and of course, the two candidates. Thank you very much for your open and frank and honest answers. I want to wish you both the best of luck. This coming May 3rd, Danvers, get out and vote May 3rd at the Danvers High School. Polls open at seven and close at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. So the better the turnout, the better we all participate in Danvers elections. So on behalf of the candidates, the Salem News and DCAT, I want to thank you all for watching this and have a great night.